Welcome everyone to Mendon City Council meeting for our regular session for Monday, October 4th, 2021 at 5:30 PM in council chambers. I'd like anyone to silence their cell phones before entering the meeting, please. Jim Bogutin is going to do our opening prayer. Pam Bloxum is going to do our pledge.
Precious Lord, we ask you today for your mercy. Your word said, God, that blessed are those who are merciful, but they shall receive mercy. We understand that we have to give mercy to get mercy. And God, we ask that we learn to give each other mercy through life and through decisions. Blessed is counsel in each person who has a decision to make on behalf of elected officials, no matter their capacity, God. Help us to have wisdom, discernment, understanding. Help us to put aside personal prejudices. Help us to put aside personal differences and always look to the betterment of our community and your people because we are stewards of what you have blessed us with. Bind us together with cords of understanding and love and compassion and help us to see you in each other. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you turn to item A on your agenda, it's to adopt the minutes of the council regular session held on September the 7th, 2021, and a council special session held on September 13th, 2021. You can see the attachment with the minutes attached. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Michael Roy. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, if you'll cast your vote, please. Motion passes. Item B on your agenda is to adopt the resolution adopting the city of Mendon 2021-2022 budget. You can see you're attached there. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution adopting the city of Mendon 21-22 budget as presented.
Motion is bade by Michael Roy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bloxum. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, if you'll cast your vote, please.
Sorry.
Motion fails. Item C on your agenda is the fire department new hire. Chief Morad, would you come up and introduce Hank for us, please, sir?
Yeah, I would like to recommend Hank Ashley for a new hire for the city of Mendon Fire Department.
Up on a recommendation of Kit Morad, do I have a motion?
Up on the recommendation of Fire Chief's Kit Morad, I move to confirm Hank Ashley as a firefighter in the Mendon Fire Department subject to path and all applicable tests.
Motion is made by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Michael Roy. Do we have any questions or discussions of Mr. Ashley? Sir. There, I thought you had something you want to tell us about yourself. Cast your vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome aboard, Mr. Ashley. We're looking forward to a long relationship with you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you. Item D is to adopt the ordinance number 1122, annual bridge maintenance report. This is something that we go through every year. It's attached back there, the the bridge numbers. Do you have a motion?
I so move.
Motion made by Ms. Pam Bloxum.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wayne Edwards. Are there any discussions? There being no discussions, if you'll cast your vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Item E on your agenda is to adopt a resolution supplementing the administrative policies and procedures to include use of federal funds, verification of contractor eligibility. This is to determine to make sure when we do bids with federal money that the contractors are compliant and don't have any things against them to keep them from doing work with federal monies. They, we check them out through a SAMs program. Do I have a motion for this?
I move to adopt the resolution supplementing the administrative policies and procedures to include number 11, use of federal funds, verification of contract eligibility as presented.
This motion is bade by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Michael Roy. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, if you'll cast your vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Item F on your agenda is to adopt a resolution, the annual certification of compliance with the state of Louisiana off system bridge replacement program. We go through this every year. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the resolution for annual certification of compliance with state of Louisiana off bridge replacement program as presented.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tariqa Walker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, cast your vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Item G on your agenda is to adopt a resolution stating that the city of Mendon agrees to fund administrative services and engineering services for the fiscal year 2022 Louisiana Community Development Block grant. What they're funding is in the back of your folder there and that was...
That's the same one we started last year.
Yes, sir, that was the same one last year and it didn't pass because of COVID, so we're reapplying for that.
Right.
Is there any... Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution stating that the city of Mendon agrees to fund administrative services and engineering services for the fiscal year 2022 Louisiana Community Development Block grant as presented.
Motion has been made by Ms. Pam Bloxum.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Michael Roy.
What area is this going to be for, Mayor?
Sir?
I said, what area are we drawing for? Because I wasn't aware.
I got a map for you if you want to look at it.
Yes, please.
Do y'all all like the map?
Well, I'm familiar with it because that was part of the grant that we worked on last year for some sewer development in District A.
Yes, sir. The same one. It's, most of it's in District A and B, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Sir?
Who chose the Coordinating Development Corporation?
These are, these are the...
Who chose to pay these people?
Who chose to pay them?
It says here that the Coordinating Development Corporation, an amount of $36,400.
Yes, sir.
Pre-agreement and administrative services of Riley Company of Louisiana.
Yes, sir.
Who were these? Who assigned these groups to...
They're the ones that have been used through the previous administrations. We still use them. I mean, nothing's changed.
So this is not a state appointment?
No, sir, it's not a state appointment.
City appointment.
Yes, sir, it's a city appointment.
And who in the city appointed him?
The council just did. Mr. Flewer, would you like to explain that to us?
The CDC, which is this coordinating, is the company who is actually applying for the grant. And for their service, they're going to collect fees based on the project itself. The CDC has been used for at least 11 years since I've been working for the city. We can search for a company, but there is no way that, I don't think we're going to get it cheaper. And they work with us in the way that we can trust them, let's put it this way.
So we don't put this up for bidding?
No.
Do you know somebody you'd like first to contact?
These are, these are engineering costs, basically.
So if I, if I understand, aren't there two companies that do this, one being CDC and another one out of Monroe? This was about years...
It's, it's them and an engineer.
And then these companies, this company will go out and do the door knocking to get the LCBG grant done? So they get the number of, of signatures that they need, right?
Basically.
They, they require data. These grants require data and they go around collecting that.
Right, okay.
Well, one of the reasons it failed last year is, you know, during COVID, they mailed out the letters and most of the letters probably laid on the table. Mr. Edwards got out and knocked a lot of doors to try to get the cards back in, but still with his efforts and some other people's efforts, it still failed. So we're going to try to do the same thing again this year.
We did about 128 applications and I'm hoping that when we start this program back up, we can assemble people and explain to them a bit more in detail what actions need to be done to make this happen. Because in District A, we're in desperate need of some improvement in our sewer system.
And B?
And I believe there are also some requirements to the, to the homeowner.
Yes, it is, some requirements.
It's not just doing something. There are requirements attached to, to the service, so to speak.
Yeah, I talked to one of the administrators over in the sweepboard for this particular program and we've spoken in detail about what needs to be done. And it's going to be more due diligent this time when this process starts.
And also by us paying the engineers and everybody upfront, that gives us extra points, which gives us a larger opportunity to receive the grants. Okay, going on to H.
Need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead and vote, I'm sorry. Motion passes unanimously. Got ahead of myself. Item H, cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana. This is a corporate endeavor agreement that's necessary for the city to receive a $75,000 grant with the relocation or rehabilitation of the Mendon Animal Shelter. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I move to authorize the mayor to enter a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana for grant fund for the relocation and rehabilitation of the Mendon Animal Shelter. Relocation site requires council approval and authorize the mayor to sign all documents pertaining to therein.
Motion is made by Mr. Wayne Edwards.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roy. Is there any discussion?
So I see now that the location has been removed from this agreement, so...
A location that never been...
Yeah, it was listed on town and it was in the last...
The location was there, but that wasn't, that wasn't keeping us from getting the grant. It can be anywhere. But anyway, Mr. Edwards made the motion.
My concern still is, because we're, we're talking, we're having a discussion now. So my concern still is the location, relocation of this animal shelter. Now, I know you've removed it from the paperwork, but what, what location do you have in mind?
I don't have one in mind. I have no location in mind.
Why does it have to be relocated? Why can't it be moved on where it's at?
Well, that's part of the motion. He said the rehabilitation would be the existing...
It says rehabilitation or relocation.
Mr. Edwards said that the council would be responsible for choosing the location.
He did.
It's chosen.
He did.
He didn't or he did?
He did.
Oh, okay.
D I D, did. Is there any other discussion? I, I need a second.
Oh, you guys...
I second, okay. Mr. Roy seconded it. So if you'll cast your vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Flewer, you have the floor, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The summary report for all funds for the month of August was not provided for your review. I don't know if you noticed that, but there was no summary report. The reason for not providing your report was actually missing manpower. As you all know, we had unexpected resignations and no instant replacement. Furthermore, I had made arrangement with Weiss, Martin and Cole to provide us service through the leading employee who is doing our audit because she was the most familiar with our system. And she was, or it was knocked down because of COVID-19. Her child developed COVID and she had to stay at home. So we lost about 10, 12 days. The resignations we had were shortly before the month is closed out and then we were sitting there without the manpower. So the replacement meanwhile, and we hired an assistant city clerk, Mrs. Heather Feeback, she's right there. And we hired also Ms. Rachel Day, replacing an employee who left us too. And we also hired and started today somebody who will work in the future specifically, but not only on payroll and accounts receivable. So we're going to develop a better paperwork for the auditors. That was the reason why I did not provide to you a report. I wanted to make sure that whenever we're going to print a report, all the bank accounts been reconciled and not just because I have to give you a report. I want to make sure that the figures are correct. You should probably find the report by the end of this week for the month of August, hopefully. What I can tell you is that overall, all major funds still show a deficit of approximately a half million dollars.
Michael, repeat that.
All major funds show a deficit of a total of a half million dollars. Means expenses are over revenues at the end of the month of August. At the end of the month of September, the sales tax commission collected for the month of August, you all know that it's, it's always a month back, they collected $569,250. Previous year, $503,000.
Five what?
503,759. Budgeted amount, $512,500. So with 11 months in the books and assuming, means not knowing and you all know what else is coming, but assuming that we're going to be at least at the same level, maybe even higher than the previous year, we probably going to close the fiscal year with $1 million more than we have budgeted for sales tax. The cash report, I can provide to you also. We have a total of $17.1 million, which is divided in actual 8.35 million cash and 8.76 million in CDs, investments and so on. Previous month was 17.3. Previous year for the same timeframe, 18.6 million. So you see, we have spent some money. Now, some other information related to the finances and finance department. Finally, I can say last Friday, we received from the American Rescue Plan, our payment of $2.189 million. It took a while, but finally we got it, which means we're going to get in 12 months, basically at the end of the next fiscal year, another $2.189 million. Both payments are, there are some regulations to it and we have to work them out, but the money belongs to the city out of the American Rescue Plan. With talking about the cash report, we have noticed a decrease in the interest rates for our savings, CD accounts. I give you an idea, you're going to put $600,000 in a CD for 12 months and your interest rate is decreased from 0.4% to 0.3%. That's what you're going to get for your money at the moment. The money is very, very cheap and with cheap money, there is no interest. So we're going to lose some money on that side, which is not tremendous, but at least I want to mention it. In the last council meeting, there was a question about the STEP program, I think from Mr. Bradford. So far, we have spent $99,150. And money for the city to be collected, the city portion, we, we collected and I transferred the money for the end of August, $93,394, which left at that time in the specific bank account, which was installed, another $11,000. So there is no problem to cover our expenses. And we're going to do this on a monthly basis because we have to calculate the overtime for the officers who served that, that program and bring it down to that line item to be reimbursed to us. Then I want to tell the residents that if you have not noticed it yet, every utility customer received with the last utility bill, a small postcard asking if the resident is willing to add $5 for pay increases for the first responders. We got the first stack back today and it will be turned into my office and I can account the numbers. So deadline was October the 31st, I believe, if I remember correct. So please, everybody, express your will, going to bring this postcard in or mail it back to us. The utility department will collect them and turn them into my office. So express your will, if you are willing to add $5 or not, show what, what you desire. Then what was interesting is we see, and we have seen for the past months, an increase in the SWEPCO billing in the average amount of about $150,000 to $275,000. The reason for is SWEPCO is part owner of a power plant in Mansfield. SWEPCO owns 43%, Klico is, owns the rest. That plant will be closed next month, I believe.
Yeah.
And explanation from SWEPCO, and I'm going to read it so I don't say anything wrong. The increase in the fuel rate, and that's where we see the increase, is unrelated to the February winter weather event, but rather looks to be primarily due to the increased lignite consumption related to the upcoming retirement of the Dollet Hills Power Plant. Now lignite is a mixture of coal and P-moss. And that's the problem with SWEPCO. They have old power plants and basically the consumers have to support the closing down of the plant. So we have probably for this month and the next month, we're probably going to see $150,000 each month, an increase. What else do I have? I have, the city is auctioning off and the auction is on the 18th of October, a tractor as well as a pole truck. Both items are sitting down at the Line Crew Building for inspection. The tractor is a minimum bid of $750 and the pole truck is $1,000, minimum bid. So if somebody is interested, from the residents, or even from employees who are not engaged with that department, you can bid them. Bid opening, October the 18th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. And the last, the city also issued an RFP. You all voted on that RFP, the authority for the mayor to go to the, ask for an RFP for the sanitation rates starting January 22. Deadline to turn in proposals is October the 25th. And there's a timeline set when maybe interviews and the council workshop supposed to be held with the results of the proposals to be able to have in the council meeting on November the 1st, a decision who will be the lucky winner, so to speak. Now, before I close, I want to say a few words on the two items which bother me. Item number one is the budget. I don't have a race in this, I don't have a horse in that race, but I wish you all would understand that since Thursday, 4:01... that since Thursday, 4/1, we act on 50%. Officially, on 50%. What that means is that, for an example, the street department is only using 50% of his money to cover potholes. I'm on the record with the mayor, and I gave it in writing to him, recommending to tell the departments, only in emergencies, to make purchases. Because we don't have the luxury to say, "Well, our commitment to pay government capital for the bucket truck, which is a yearly commitment roughly about $30,000, if I'm not correct, well, we gonna cut it in half." It doesn't work that way. So, I gonna tell the chief, "Your new vehicles are not absolutely necessary." He probably will say, "Yes, they are necessary." And I understand what he is saying. But absolutely necessary means emergency, so to speak. Because we cannot cut the salaries in half. So, the money goes out the door very fast. And I really have a very hard time, a very hard time. And I understand what your problem is with the budget. It's not the money. Everybody knows that. But I'm reading in the paper when, for an example, Mr. Edwards says, "I'm willing to compromise." What is your compromise? Why is the council not talking to each other? You gonna, you gonna bring this city to its knees? And I don't think it's in anybody's interest to be on the record. And I just want to remind you too. This is the budget, the last budget where you actually are fully responsible for. Because your term is ending 2022. And there is one more budget coming, but you will not be responsi... If you are not re-elected or whatever, then you are gone, and somebody else can handle the problem. I urge you, come together and discuss it. You gonna ruin the city. And you don't make any friends with the employees. Because they don't get agreed pay raises. And sooner or later, the hammer falls, and the state is knocking on the door. So, in that point, I ask you to come together, in your own interest, and say, "Well, I have a problem with this and this and this." Has nothing to do with the money in the budget. If there is something in the budget, nobody, not you, Mr. Edwards, not you, Mrs. Walker, not Mr. Bradford, not Mr. Roy, not Mrs. Bloxham, came to me and say, "Well, can we look into this and this and this?" You all gonna sit there and sit on the hot pot and wait till it goes up. So, that's point number one. Point number two, it's also in my interest to clear this, is the pay raises. Everybody is entitled to more money. Let's put it this way, number one. Number two, what bothers me is that everybody is talking about the pay raises, but nobody said how much that cost. Now, some people will say, "That is not our business. You all have to find the money." Yes, we have to find the money. But are you all aware that the pay raise requests for both departments, fire and police, regardless if it is supposed to be or not whatsoever, the costs are a half million dollars? Where is that money coming from? You may say, "Well, there is less overtime." Well, then, I gonna ask you to look in a statistic which was shown several times. In 2018, 2019, we had 32 officers. We still had 120-some thousand dollars overtime. The overtime is also related to what the PD has to do. It's not only because he has shortage. There is, God knows, for the parades. There is this, and this, and this, and this. Are we starting to bill? My question to you all, and I wish that these... I should not say it, but these back-room deals should have to stop. Come out, sit down, come in, and discuss it. Where do we gonna get the money from? It would have been easy. I've been waiting for three months. In June, we had basically the budget ready. I started early, because I knew it was become difficult. But since then, nothing happened. We gonna come to every meeting and, no, we don't approve the budget. That is not sustainable. And what's not sustainable also is to say, "Well, I in favor of pay raises." I'm sure everybody of you is in favor of pay raises. How do we gonna finance them? How we gonna pay for? That is my question. And I hope, and now I'm finished, I hope that you all come together in the interest of the city. Not in your own, not in mine, or anybody else, in the interest of the city. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Flure?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Back to the STEP program. You said that we had collected $99,150?
We paid for expenses. We paid for expenses, $99,150. That includes the vehicles, so far overtime, radios, whatsoever. And out of the collection from the PD, we had transferred $93,000 so far, at the end of August. The $99,000 is due in the last payroll item, or weekly, excuse me. So, the city's portion, which is in the agreement that we gonna get first our money before it is disbursed, we are tracked.
Do you know the total revenue from the STEP program?
The last one, when I talked to Lieutenant Cheatham, it was 120-some thousand days. You have to, you have to under... You have to understand, when you gonna see the schedule, there is a very difficult time to bring the manpower out. And there is, on certain days, 16 hours in a pay period. In some other pay periods, there is only four hours. There is weather issues coming along. If we would have a full staff, yeah, you can put two vehicles out every day. And you probably, you probably gonna collect every day a minimum of 20 citations, if not even more.
Well, I'm not questioning the number of manpower work or anything like that. I'm very aware of the staffing deficiencies we have, you know. But I have yet to see any numbers, as a council person, on a monthly basis like we get from you, to see what numbers we're getting. You know, that's why I'm asking the questions. You know, if we, if we only have three guys that can work this month, so be it. That's fine. But I think as a council, we should have an understanding of what we're getting. And in my perspective, I'm not getting that. Maybe the rest of them are, but I'm not. That's why I'm asking the question. Do we have a total dollar, as of this last month, what we have made in the STEP program?
The number exists. I would have to ask Lieutenant Cheatham. Because that's where the money goes into the bank account as well as outstanding, which is not being paid yet. But that number is coming out of the PD. We can provide you that number. We can provide you the detail when we have an officer out, or the PD can provide you the information. We have it on our pay records. When you can see, or where you can see who is out there on which day. And shows you exactly the hours. It shows the calculation through the payroll, how we pay these officers. But the collection itself is coming through the PD. That's where the number is coming from.
Okay.
And I may be able to, I'm not, I'm think that's, which can be tracked and printed out. We've all talked about it, Michael was down there, and we were talking about it that one day. But as far as printed out, we have not done that. But I think I can give that to all of you.
Well, I mean, one other thing that brings where I'm going also is that, you know, accountability. In governmental accounting, we're held, you know, for checks and balances. And I know we've got an issue right now with the auditors on a check and balance system. And we have the same thing. I hope that this will be rectified through the people we've hired, you know, in the accounting department. But, you know, I'm sitting up here, as well as the rest of these council people, you know, and we're liable for that, you know. And so that's why I think it's important that we get the STEP numbers to the council, so we know what's going on. You know, like I said, I'm not questioning the manpower. I understand that, you know. So, that's not my question, but liability, it is.
I don't have, I don't have... Well, let's put it this way. I have a good feeling with that program, because we have created individual bank accounts only for that STEP program. So, the money is not mingled with any other payments. I'm confident that we can, that we can reconcile between stopped, collected, still outstanding, and to our records in the general ledger. I feel confident that we have no issue with that.
Well, that was part of the agreement anyway, when we decided that we would implement the STEP program, is that we would be provided a report each month on the number of citations, amount collected, yeah.
I can get that.
Okay.
I, Mrs. Walker, I don't have.
Yeah, no, it wasn't supposed to come from you. It was supposed to come from the chief, yeah.
I think Mr. Lieutenant Cheatham gave me a list till the end of August, which was collected. I have that list. And I have the STEP program separate from any other activity of the PD. So, I can provide what you want to see coming out of the accounting department. The figure, who, how many he stopped, is coming out of the PD.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we agreed that we would have a workshop three months after the STEP program started, to see where we were at.
We did.
And it has been three months, right?
Probably.
Yeah.
I don't call that.
I must not have participated in that workshop, because the three months is new to me.
Those three.
Before we say that.
Well, I'm not questioning, but I said, I'm not from, I'm not aware of the three months. Because I still have questions in reference to the STEP program.
And in reference to you talking about the pay raises for police and fire. Now, I've come to you, I've sat down, I put whole spreadsheet together, and I've sent some numbers to state civil service to verify those hourly. You and I differ. I even built in that spreadsheet, you know, what I thought based off percentages were on actual payroll dollars and the burden, pension, etc. So, can't say I haven't come to you, correct? So, I've tried to do my due diligence to find out where the money is gonna come from to pay the police and fire if the council chooses to do that, you know. So, I've tried, you know. And I can't make, you know...
I believe, I told you, I cannot reconcile your number. I have a problem with your number.
That's right. And that's why I sent them to the hourly rate. You differ than I on hourly rates, you know. So, that's why I sent it to somebody else to figure, to make sure my hourly numbers are correct versus, versus what you're doing. You know, so I'm trying to diligently go through this and figure out where it's coming from, you know. But what you don't understand is that I can't make any of these folks come and meet and do anything. You know, we met three out of, I met with four of these council members three out of four times. There was no budget issues. We worked through those budget numbers great. You know, we didn't argue, we didn't fussify. You know, there is nothing brought up about those numbers. You know, so at this point, you know, I'm at, I'm at a loss. And I hate to say that, but all I know is to be truthful at this point, you know. Because it's laid on this council, and I'm part of that council. But, you know, that's just like, well, I'm gonna stop there. Okay. I hope I addressed what you felt like I haven't done.
Mr. Flure, do you know how many utility customers we have?
If, I have six, six point, 6,500 some in that area.
So, if the $5 deal passed, we're looking at an additional $40,000 a month, something like that?
Yeah.
So, that would still fall a little short of fully funding if the number of happening here is correct.
That's correct.
But it would knock a big chunk out of it.
Right.
Okay. That's also wondering how many, what those numbers look like if it does pass.
It is correct when you say that the $5 is down the road a substitute to make the pay raises. But my concern, and I mentioned this last time, these pay raises, what happens if the next administration, because you have to go with the $5 per customer through an ordinance, correct? What happens if the council does not approve the ordinance? Or if the council approves the ordinance, and the next administration says, "No, I gonna go down the road and say, 'We eliminate these $5. We write a new ordinance.'" Then where is the money coming from? The source of, the source of the funding is not quite, I wouldn't say questionable, but it can be discussed.
Correct.
Yeah?
Michael, since we talking about funding, and we in the process of looking at another contractor to pick up our solid waste, it's a good possibility that $17 a month gonna increase also, isn't it?
It is a possibility.
And when that does increase, just like you were just telling the city attorney, then we really have to decide where we wanna actually spend this money, and what's gonna be essential, and what's gonna be necessary. Because garbage pickup gonna happen, whether we like the cost or not.
That's true.
And I'm quite sure that seventeen dollars a month not gonna cut it.
And I just want to, uh, are you, is that your question? Was that your question? Okay. I just want to respond to you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I offer myself as a go-between. Gonna bring in your, gonna bring in, I'm only part-time at the moment. Gonna bring in your ideas, and I can sit down with Mr. Edwards or Mr. Bradford or whatsoever and discuss the points. The other elephant in the room, that is a personal problem, I believe, not a money problem.
Right.
We all know that.
And I don't have a problem as a council member, sitting down with any of them and discussing it. I mean, not, not one problem. But it goes back to your statement is that one administration does one thing, and when the other one follows suit, you know, it's not good enough. Or, you know, we wanna change it. You know, I, I'm all for doing it the right way and sticking with it no matter what. If it's right, it's right. It's wrong, it's wrong. You know, but for us to go and hire in an economic director at seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars, we pay his apartment, we pay five hundred dollars for his car allowance, you know, and so that budget probably was what, four hundred thousand dollars by the time it was all said and done for that economic director's?
About three hundred.
About three hundred? Okay. So, of course, I wouldn't hear, so. But now we've lowered that budget number significantly, you know, um, and now those things change. You know, I, I guess I don't understand the rhyme or the reason behind that. Because I've tried to compromise and give my salary, which is what, about twelve thousand dollars in a year? I've tried to compromise and give that. So, I mean, what more as, as one individual council person can I do? You know, so, you know, I have no hard feelings against anybody on this council. You know, I'll work with them in any shape, form, or fashion that I can. You know, if it takes me away from my day job, that, that's what I'll do. That's what I agreed to do when I ran for this position, you know. So, but I have tried, you know, and to make people answer their phones, answer their emails, I cannot do that, you know.
And I understand this, Mr. Roy, and you heard me, what I'm saying, or what I said. You, all of you have to come together.
I understand.
All of you. And if I gonna, if I have polled one or the other one, that was my intention, to get and start, that you start thinking about what you've been doing. I mean, we cannot issue PO numbers because I said, I do not put fifty percent in the general ledger. Because if you, if I would have done this on Friday, to issue for tree trimming, a PO number over two hundred thousand dollars, then I would have to come, if you would have voted tonight in favor, or if you all would have voted in favor, I would change a general ledger with God knows how many accounts, each individual account.
Right.
So I said to my department, we don't do anything. We hope on Monday night, it's done the right way. There are many ways to go to Rome, you know, but at the end, they all lead to Rome.
Right.
So now, since it's voted down again, tomorrow morning, we gonna put fifty percent in. And the, I recommend again to the mayor tomorrow morning to send out a memo, only for purchases, only for emergencies. Then we gonna see. How far are we gonna go? If that's what you all want, and I say, oh, I know some want something different, others want something different too. But my idea tonight was to poke each one of you. And don't take it personal.
No, I'm not taking it personally. I'm just simply trying to make sure that the people I represent know that I have come to you, I have sat down, and I've worked numerous hours trying to find the money, which I believe I have all but eighty thousand dollars. You and I disagree on that, and the only person that can change that is the state civil service board that tell us if my hourly rates are right for everybody on the PD.
Okay.
You know, and that's, that's what it takes, is.
That's fine. And I have no problem with that. If you get these figures, come into the city clerk's office, and we gonna put it, put it out there, and it goes to vote if, if it comes to your figures. So.
Well, I, I think we've gotta look beyond this because in my point, my viewpoint is, is if us being in the situation we in, are in with this budget, what kind of liability does that put on everybody? You know, at what point do we start making those cuts that we don't wanna cut? You know, where we don't wanna cut, you know?
Believe me, I'm, I'm the last one who wants that situation. I would like to have seen this budget been passed through.
I agree.
Two months ago.
I agree.
Because nothing has changed.
I agree.
Nothing has changed. Nobody came to me and said, change this, or can you look into this, or is there a way to do this and this? Nothing has changed for two months, and I don't think that is right. So.
I hope we discussed it to the. I just wanna do the due diligence for my constituents.
And I agree that you came to my office and we talked and you discussed it.
Okay, chief?
Sure.
I'm sure. You're item J.
Okay, council, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Walker, CJ sent me a text message a minute ago, apparently she's watching on TV, but she says she can print out a step report just like she does the police report on a monthly basis, and, and I'll have her do that tomorrow, and get that to, I'll email it to all of y'all. And also, Mr. Bradford, you know, wanna workshop the step program, put us on, on the agenda for the, for the workshop, and we'll be there, okay? Okay, month of August, we collected ten thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars in city fines, two hundred and forty dollars to the crime lab, two hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents to city court, uh, two hundred and seventy dollars to the marshal's office, three hundred and ninety dollars to the defendant's office, eighteen dollars to the clerk's fund, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the wear center, uh, twelve dollars to the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, one hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents to off-duty witness fees, twenty-seven dollars to the court case management information system, thirty dollars to the Louisiana Traumatic Head and Spinal Cord Injury Trust Fund, ninety dollars to the Judicial Building Fund, three dollars to the Judicial Education Fund, totaling twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Do I have a motion to accept it?
So move.
Motion made by Michael Roy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wayne Abrams. Do we have any discussions or questions of the chief? There being none, if you'll cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Chief, will you give us your, uh, oral report, please?
During the month of September, Mendon Police Department worked thirty-two vehicle accidents. We had one hundred and sixty-three warrants, arrest warrants were issued, fifty arrest warrants were served. We responded to six hundred and forty-three calls for service, created one hundred and thirty-nine incident reports. We made fifty-seven arrests. We wrote seventy-six citations. And to little monthly step report, we hadn't zero people out on interstate this past month. Our staffing is in such a bind that, that the guys just can't get out there. If they're working, they're working on a shift. We did collect, uh, over the, this past month, we collected thirty-four step citations. Some of those were actually almost doubled because they didn't pay it on time and, and had some court costs added to it. So, uh, we got the fine cost plus the court cost also. And that's basically all I have.
We have any questions of the chief? There being no questions, we appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, public comments. If anybody has a public comment, if you'll step up to the microphone, please. Okay, if you'll give us your, uh, if, if, yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and your address, please, sir.
Okay, my name is Don West, six, seven, nine North Main Street, Sibley, Louisiana. And I know you're wondering, uh, living in Sibley, why am I here, uh, addressing y'all? Uh, I love this town. I do business in this town, and, uh, I have children that live here, and I think it's an awesome town. And I just want to thank y'all for taking a step of faith and sticking your necks out to get elected into the positions that you're in. I'm here to encourage you because I feel like you need encouraging. We all need it at one time or the other, especially in these times. We're living in times right now that we never dreamed we'd ever face. We have challenges that we ne- never dreamed we'd ever have to face. And a lot of times, it's hard to come up with an answer. And I've been listening, and, and I understand, you know, uh, some of the things you're up against as an individual and as individuals, uh, we have to put up with the same things just in life, you know, finding answers. And I, I say that to say this. I had a real successful lawn care business at one time. And we cut grass from Bossier to Monroe and to Spring Hill and all points in between. And I mean, we were, you know, you, you, you do everything you can in your own power to, to keep things going. Well, my daughter sent me a devotion at one time, and it was called Jesus Calling, and I'd never heard of it. And, uh, so I started reading it. And, uh, what happened was, I learned that I was just reading the words and really wasn't getting anything out of it, so I just slowed down and started reading it slowly and letting the Lord speak to me. And then, then he led me to start doing this on, and, and on an individual basis, you know, just getting off by myself, uh, first thing in the morning, giving him the first fruits of my day. And then he led me to do it with my crew. And what started happening was something I could not believe. And it had nothing to do with me and my individual talents or gifts or anything like that. It was all him. What started happening was, we started getting more done in less time. Equipment started lasting longer. I had no answer for it except him, except he's a way maker. He can make a way when we can't.
That's right.
He said to seek me first, and I'll take care of all this stuff. And that's what I started doing. And I've been doing it for years, literally for years now. And some of the, some of the ways that he has blessed me and my family is beyond my comprehension. And I would just like to encourage you. Y'all are up against a lot. There's no doubt about it. You're up against a lot, but there is an answer, and it doesn't come from the wisdom of man. It comes from seeking him first. He said, I love those who seek me and seek me early. And that's what I wanted to just present to y'all. We have an opportunity right here to be something really special, if we'll let it happen. And it's not up to us as individuals. When you start seeking him on, on an individual basis, y'all start becoming the team that you, I know you wanna be. And it'll happen, not on your own power, it'll just start happening because he knows how to do it. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate the fact that, like I said, you're willing to stick your necks out on the chopping block to get a job done that I know you wanna get done. And I, I just wanna thank you so much for that. And I'd like to lift y'all up right now in prayer. Father, I just thank you so much for the champions that are on this panel up here right now. And I know, Lord, that they can become champions like never before when they start seeking you because you're giving them, they're giving you an opportunity to work through them and become that light and that special, that special thing that this town, this parish, and this state needs. And we just bless you in Jesus' name. Thank y'all so much.
We appreciate your comment. We appreciate your prayers for our city, and we most definitely appreciate your prayers for our council.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm, I'm happy to, I'll just sit in my chair. I don't care if I talk too much.
If you'll tell us your name and your address, please, ma'am?
I am Betty Callaway. Mm-hmm. Eight, zero, three, E Street, Mendon, Louisiana. They're waiting for me to talk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I got a student up there, by the way. But anyway, it's my understanding that the meeting time will be changed. Am I right?
What meeting time?
Meeting time?
Yes, your meeting time, in, in the daytime instead of in the evening. It's not. I don't know where I got that information from. Because the reason I say that is because of, I like to come to the meetings, okay? And I know, I know some people who work, you know, who would not be able to come during the daytime. So I just want to make sure that it's not gonna be changed to days.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Callaway, when we were elected, the meetings had been like at seven o'clock, and we found that a lot of people who worked went home and got comfortable and didn't wanna come out again. So we opted to move the meetings to five-thirty, where people could come directly from work and found that we had a lot better attendance from the citizens at five-thirty. But there's never been any discussion to make the city council meetings during the day.
Well, I guess I heard it through the grapevine.
Are you referring, Ms. Callaway, to the, to the city council meetings or the workshops that are held in the morning?
I'm talking about the city council meetings.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
But y'all have workshops too, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
When can I come up to and join you? I was just teasing.
That's the way I am, y'all. Now, just have to understand me, some of them folk up there, like I taught one of them, I used to have to put a belt on his butt.
What a joke.
No, I have good kids. You know what, I'm gonna tell you this. I love my kids so much until I never did have to put my hand on a child. I hug them. Because a lot of these kids become my choices. You'd be surprised if anybody.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm still a cookie at the end of the day. They got their cookie, one of them right there. But anyway, that's the way I am, that's my label. I have a few ones great too. By the way, y'all, I won't stop talking a bit, but I want you to pick your dogs from barking away. Now, I wait, y'all don't wait somebody that I got with a dog from barking.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comment. Mr. Miles, if you'll tell us, well, I just said your name, so.
Resident of District D, stay on fifteen oh seven Holland Street. Just got a couple of questions, mayor, council. One being, uh, I see we got a new city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Was that approved by the city council?
No, sir, it was not.
It was not? So how did he become the city, uh, attorney?
When the, uh, council stopped showing up for meetings, I visited with others at the LMA and the attorney general's office, and they said to do an emergency proclamation and pointing, because as a city, we have to have a city attorney to go to court and things like that, so that's how he got appointed.
And that wasn't an opportunity to circumvent the council, mayor?
Certainly.
That wasn't an opportunity to circumvent the council because of this. Because the, the city handbook says that that's the council's decision. You bring them before the council, but the council has the final say.
Yes, sir, but the council wasn't coming to the meetings.
I understand. So, so we're not going to go by the handbook?
In that particular case, we did not.
And with the other employees?
Which, which ones are you?
Ones that are tied to the budget?
Like?
Or the part-time employees?
Give me a reference as to who are you talking about?
Economic director.
Economic director, no, sir, that's not an appointed position by the council.
That's not?
No, sir.
Neither is the, the, what's that, the young lady?
The human resources?
Human resources.
No, sir, that's not an appointed position by the council.
So were, were there raises tied to the budget?
Yes, sir, there was.
The raises are tied to this budget that, that we're trying to adopt?
Yes, sir.
And, and I understand that that's the sticking point?
Uh, well.
With, with the, with the no votes, I'm saying, Terry, mayor?
No, sir, I don't believe so. Mr. Roy has offered to pay for their raises. I've offered to write a check to pay for their raises. And Mr. Edwards said it wasn't about the money, it was the way that I did it.
Right. And that's the thing, mayor, what's taking so long with the handbook?
So, pardon me now?
What's taking so long with the handbook?
She's working on it amongst her other duties that she has to do. And she's have, been having to do payroll the last two months, I believe, so.
We're three years into your administration.
Yes, sir.
Since twenty twenty-two?
Yes, sir, and the, the handbook is just about finished. And within this budget, our monies to send it, to have it looked at professionally to make sure that we, we've done it correctly.
Well, back to the city, I don't mean to be all over the place. But first, I've heard of that.
Heard what?
Of the Attorney General giving you permission to get a city attorney. Was that made public?
I, I did not say he gave me permission. I said I've talked to them about it, how to handle it. And with the LMA individuals and the Gallagher Law Firm.
That, I was unaware of that, is what I'm saying. As you know, I, I've been a resident here all my life.
Yes, sir.
I, I consider myself an ambassador for Mendon. And it's almost, it, it is embarrassing, Terry, to, uh, mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay, call me Terry, that's fine.
To go, to go to Bozier, Hallton, sit down amongst people, and they find out you're from Mendon, and, and you're the burnt of all jokes, you laugh and stop.
Oh, I agree.
The, the city of Mendon. It, it's been so contentious that, that we can't get anything done. And, and what I'm saying to you, mayor, is that we need leadership. Managers make right decisions. Leaders do things the right way. And I'm not so sure that things have been done the right way here, here in Mendon. I feel, with the information that I have, that you're circumventing the council with the way you man, doing the city, the administrative stuff. And you leave them out, you don't give them any say in the economic director's pay raise, the, the other person's pay raise, when there are city, city employees, but just two. What about the other city employees?
There are other city employees that are all receiving raises.
That substantial?
The standard?
That substantial?
Substantial raises?
Yes.
I would consider them substantial, yes, sir.
The, what, what other city employees are, are we talking about? Because I only know of those two.
The entire line crew, the entire water crew, and the street department, the, all of those guys. All of those, we're bringing those up to where we can hire qualified individuals, electricians, you know, people like that, that, those three departments, yes, sir. That, that's all in the budget. That was all discussed at workshops.
I've read something, Mr. Yocum, a statement that you made that, I can't give it to you verbatim, but, but the gist of it is that you liken the mayor of the city to a CEO. He's not a CEO, he's the mayor. And the system that's in place in this city is mayor, council, not CEO. So you guys are gonna have to get to work together and to compromise. Whatever the sticking points are, everyone's gonna have to give in order to move things forward. Three years into this administration, it's been one controversy after another. It's embarrassing. And I think it's time for it to stop. Ms. Blox, I'm your representative. This thing started out with the sign for your late husband, whom I love very much. In my opinion, it was done the wrong way. You circumvented the council. And I feel that if we ever gonna get this thing back on track, everyone's gonna have to be a part of it, the council and the mayor, not just the mayor and a couple councilmen's. We're gonna have to move forward. Or as Mr. Fleury stated, you're sabotaging the city. Your platform, Mr. Mayor, when you ran for office, gonna bring the city together, hasn't happened. City's divided along racial lines. We, we're all separate. At some point in time, the greater good is gonna have to take the forefront. The individual agendas, the egos are gonna have to be set aside. And let's see the greater good for the citizens, all the citizens of Mendon. And I'm gonna implore you guys to sit down, air your differences, and come to a compromise. Without, we, we know what happens without compromise. We're in this situation now because there's no compromise. So let's find some common ground. Might not be exactly what you want, but let's give and take. Just, just to move the city forward. I had to, to come tonight, uh, mayor.
Call me Terry because.
I had to come tonight, no, no, mayor.
Whether you like it or not, we're friends, so.
Well, we are friends.
Yeah.
Well, I consider you, you know, everybody, uh, working for the city. But I, I want things done the right way. It shouldn't take three years to get a handbook. Shouldn't be that difficult. So can, can you tell me what the sticking point is, why, why it's taking so long, besides COVID? Are, are there issues in the handbook with authority for hiring? Or who, who does the hiring, who does the firing? Or that, that's what's not agreed?
There's no real issues with it, it's just redoing it and updating it. And our HR manager is making sure that it's done correct and legally. And doing that, you just can't, she just can't have her thought process or my thought process. You have to go through, you know, the Louisiana labor law and make sure everything's done correctly. And that's the reason it's taking so long between everything else that she's, you know, challenged to do. So, I mean, it takes, I mean, you know, it's just like raising a child. You don't do it overnight, it takes a while to, to do it. You know, and I, and I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just telling you, it, it's, it's a very important thing that when, this is what you look at to run your city and do city government. So you want to make sure it's done correctly.
So, so we're updating? Is that what, are we changing?
We're updating and making changes that were not legal in the handbook. Or, or up to, let me say code, legal, whatever you call it, labor standards.
If I may say something, I, it's not her responsibility. The handbook is not her responsibility. She has nothing to do with the running of the city. That's the mayor and the city council. Now, prior to her coming, we started after about maybe fifteen months. We finally were able to get it on the agenda. But then, while she was hired, she was charged with working on the handbook. And I even told her, that's not her responsibility. That's the council and the mayor's responsibility. So it's been given to her to further prolong it. Yeah.
And that's another issue. I, I think what Ms. Callaway was alluding to, well, I can't say what she was alluding to, but I, I'm gonna say this. I, I think you are unfair with the residents in District B by not letting, uh, changing up that workshop to where Ms. Walker can attend. Sort of, you know, work that thing where she can be in attendance. Because her, right now, the, her district is not being represented at all in the workshop. Ms. Blox?
Yes, sir, Mr. Miles, part of the, the reason that those workshops are held during working hours is because we've got to have input from the employees here at the city. And if we have them stay over four, after four o'clock, it's overtime. And you're hearing how that we have pinched every penny out of that budget to make everything happen that we can. So why would we pay overtime when it's not necessary? We can have those meetings during the day, and they're here, they're already on pay, and we're not having to come up with additional monies. Now, this, this is something that everybody understands when we run for office, that there are workshops going to be held. And they're not necessarily going to be held at the same time every day, every week. Because it has to accommodate the subject matter that we're covering in the workshop. So when we were talking to, when we were talking to the, the, the street crews and the, the street crews, the, the linemen and the water people, we had those supervisors in there so that we could talk about their pay raises. So had we had that meeting at five o'clock, we would have been paying for them to come back at five o'clock.
Most of those people are on sale.
And I'm just trying to make some clarity.
We also held some of those budget meetings during the summer.
A lot, they were, most of them.
I think, if I, and I don't recall the dates, but most teachers that I know of are off during the summer.
Well, I don't teach.
I, I'd like to respond to what you said about the, uh, chief, gone in the CEO, and I, I think every one year can probably bring us greed, we beat the budget horse to death about four times over. The, the law classifies the mayor as the CEO of the, of the, of the city. He is by the law, the chief executive officer of the city.
With administrative duties only, not legislative. He don't make policy.
But it, but it refers to him as, so when you said.
Yeah, I would say he's CEO. He's an administrator.
But that's, that's the legal classification for the mayor.
Okay, as administrator, you can't, you can't say he's a CEO with, with sole authority. Most CEOs have sole authority.
But that's not what I said. I said he is the CEO of the, of the, of the city, because that's what the law literally calls him, the chief executive officer.
With administrative duties?
Yes, if there's any operation.
Okay, so whenever you say CEO, if you're gonna use that, you should also say administrative duties and not policymaking or legislative.
I'm quoting the law. I'm just saying that he is the CEO, that's what the law classifies him as. As you stated, the administrative duties, there are three branches of government.
That's right.
The executive, the legislative, and the judicial. The council comprises the legislative branch, so the governing body per the city charter. The mayor is the CEO, the chief executive officer. He's the chief over the executive branch over the day-to-day operations of the city. Whether it be through a handbook, whether it be through ordinance, if there is any attempt by the mayor, the council, or anyone else to try and remove authority from one branch and place it in another, that's unconstitutional. Whether it's the mayor trying to take authority from the council or vice versa. So when I call him the CEO, I'm not saying he's the CEO of, of the owner of the business and he has all rule and power. I'm quoting the law, that he is the chief executive officer of the city, the same as the head elected official of any governing body would be. And so I, I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding, I'm not sure the context of it. But I, but when I say he's the CEO, he is the CEO. Now, he is, there are checks and balances. He is checked by the council and judiciary branch, and that goes three ways. But he is very much so the CEO per the law of the state of Louisiana.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir, and I, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, I, I just took it to mean that you were saying that.
And that's definitely understandable.
He had sole authority as a CEO, because most CEOs I know, they, they run their company.
Yeah, they rule with an iron fist, yeah, I, I agree.
That's a fact, but, but here we dealing with a mayor and a council.
Yes, sir.
So, once again, I implore you guys, put your differences aside, put your egos aside, and let's compromise. Let's move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miles. Yes, sir, if you'll come up to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please, sir.
Benjamin Martin, seven sixteen Pine Street, Mendon, Louisiana. Question and a comment for the mayor. Why do you feel it not necessary to confer with the council when dealing with salaries of, of personnel?
That's what the workshops are for. The, it was in the, you know, in the workshops and in the budget.
I've watched some of the council meetings, I've read about them, that you had salary rec, salaries in the budget that you had not discussed. And that was part of the problem at the council meeting. Am I mistaken?
Not that I'm aware of, all, all the monies were in there, you can look at your budget.
The question was, why did you not confer with them before you presented them the budget?
I give them the budget, or Mr. Fleury gives them the budget for them to review and look at. They compare, just like when Mr. Fleury gave me the budget, I looked at it, compared it to last year's, and that's how I could tell checks and balances what we're spending and not spending. So I figured they could do the same thing.
I've not been a mayor.
Okay.
I don't want to be. But I've had similar positions. I've been a department chair at about four different universities. I find it that I get along better with my faculty when I confer with them prior to making major decisions. And that way, we get along a lot better. I've really never had any difficulty. And when there was one possible difficulty, and I'll, I'll give it to you, it's a humorous one. I had a faculty member who, in my opinion, was going off the deep end. So I mentioned to another faculty member, I said, I think Joe is going crazy. I think I'm gonna have to get rid of Joe. She says to me, when did you get a psychology degree? How can you make such a statement? I shut my mouth, went about my business. About two weeks later, she came in my office, closed the door, she said, Joe is crazy, you got to do something about Joe. Now, I don't know whether she observed it after I made the observation, or whether he did something that sort of set her off. But in that instance and in others, I conferred with my colleagues before I made major decisions. And we always got along, we always had an amicable relationship. And I did not leave those positions because of bad relations. I left the positions because I never want that kind of position for an extended period of time. And I think if we would be more collegial, and I, I heard the discussion about CEO. Well, CEO, okay. But if you want to get along with your board. CEO, okay, but if you want to get along with your board, you've got to have good relations with the board and consider them not after you make some decisions, but before you make some decisions, and take into account their opinions in those decisions. I've had to make some decisions that a lot of folk agreed with. But one of the things that I discovered is, when I explained to them why I decided what I decided, although they continued to disagree with me, they said, I do understand. And what seems to be missing in a lot of the discussion here is understanding. And I'm not putting it all on one person, although I'm speaking to you possibly as if I'm putting it all on you, I'm not. It has to be a collegial relationship. And if we confer with each other before it's time for that final vote, I think a lot more can be done, and the city and the council will look a whole lot better in the public. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. You give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
I'm Webster Taylor, 507 Sunset Lineman, Louisiana. And I'm in District A. And the last city council, this is directed to you, Terry, you acted just like a little old child. And then after the, you gets over in your corner and do your little pouting, and then you got the city police coming up here, talking all that crap, saying this and that. They don't have no respect for the city either. And you talking about y'all trying to get the city together? I don't see how. Because you think that you can run Mendon by yourself, but you can't. You got peoples right there beside you that votes against or for whatever you want. So if you want the budget to pass, compromise with them. Okay, the economic developer person, you want him a $6,000 raise? What kind of jobs he done bought in this city? None, as we can see. We got the same jobs that we had when he was not the developer man. Okay, now, the human resource woman, I don't know nothing about that, but you can see that there's no jobs in Mendon for peoples to go to work, because the majority of the kids, when they graduate from high school, graduate from college, they out of Mendon. Because it's nothing here for nobody. Of color, I'll put it like that. It's nothing. All of my kids done left and went to Dallas and got a good, successful jobs and stuff. They wouldn't have never been able to make that kind of money in Mendon, what they making now. That's all I got to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. First of all, I need to ask permission from my sister, you okay with me speaking?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name is LaJune Abram McDonald. And mayor, it would be very easy for me to tell you some things about myself that you would know exactly who I am. But I'm, how old, sixty-seven? I'd be, no, I'm sixty-six.
Well, we're close to the same age.
Okay, in December, I'll be sixty-seven.
Okay.
I don't really know the council members. There's one I do know, that I've changed diapers for and cleaned her nose and everything and fed her, and trust me, you probably a lot more happier, and you don't even realize to have the young lady here versus her mother. What I want to say is, I voted for you. I've always loved your business, the lawn care and the weeping willow trees that I couldn't afford. I don't know where you all go to church. I don't know what you believe in. I don't even know how honest you are. But I want to be proud of my home. I have been so far, even when your husband was living. He and my daddy had some run-ins, you know, but he was pretty fair, you know? But I just want to say, in order to get respect, which I don't have a problem giving it, but a lot of times in my years working, I didn't get respect because of this. Temple Runya Manufacturers, where I worked for thirty years. And it's pathetic that you don't have to particularly like this in nobody. And I don't particularly have to like your skin either. But it's about being fair and being honest. I can't answer that for you, but I try to do the best I can to be fair and be honest, because I don't want to go to sleep at night, I can't if I'm not. And what I expect that each of you should be able to do, and I pray that you are, I can't afford five more dollars right now onto my utilities, the kind of money that the raises that have been discussed, and maybe they can, but I can't. You know, I know a lot of people that are struggling once they have to have a cutoff fee and pay all of that, but that's beside the point. This is a classmate. This is a godbrother. I don't know you, Mr. Yelkom, Mr. Roy, but I think a lot of what I'm looking at, but I just want to give you the thought, food for thought. To be honest, be fair, nobody's getting paid to tell lies or to be irresponsible. You'll find out, if y'all pray about it, and you make your decisions to work together, that you got some doggone good people working for you with the same color skin I got. And I mean, we as a community in Mendon, we expect for y'all to look out for the best for all of us.
Of course.
You know? And I just pray that y'all do that. And you're well dressed, you're too.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, ma'am, if you'll give us your name and your address.
My name is Shamika Harris, and I live on 103 Fuller Street, and I think I'm in District B. My question to all of you is, y'all got to get along. I'm sick of looking at TV, China 12 News. It's embarrassing to have our city on national TV. You want to be America's Next Top Model, well, guess what? You made it. I've been here for twenty-plus years of my life. My children go to school here. I have three children, one of my sons is in college, and the other one's at Mendon High, and then I have a ten-year-old daughter. Not one time, Mr. Terry Gardner, mayor, have I seen you huffing the kids come back to school. When the back to school comes back to Mendon, I see one of the state troopers, huffing the kids back to school. When we lost that child who lost his life to simple gun violence, the whole city hurt. There's nothing here for our children here in this city, besides they be in the streets twenty-four, seven. Okay? Curfew's set, that's understandable. I can understand that, because every parent want to know where their child is at every time. But Matthew 18:20 says, for whether a two or three gathered together in my name, I will be in the midst of them. First Peter 4 and 8 says, above all, love each other deeply, because love covers a multitude of sin. Where's y'all love at? Because it's embarrassing for we to look at y'all on national TV and can't get along with each other. That stuff hurts. It just don't hurt us, but what kind of example y'all send for the children? Y'all grandchildren, my children, they are the next generation. You done lived your life. The generation's left up to them now. But if y'all can't get along and get on one accord, this city's gonna fall apart. We got to stand on God's promises, not the man premises, but stand on God's promises. You not setting no example for these children. There's nothing here for these children. There need to be more activities and more things here for these children to do, besides the streets and gun violence. If our city can raise so much money for St. Jude, why can't y'all get together and raise money to bring this city back together? We ain't on one accord. Y'all at each other's neck. You not setting no example for these children. Our children are the future, am I right or am I wrong? Thank you, I thought I was right. They are the hope for tomorrow. But if we don't get on one accord, if y'all don't get on one accord, y'all ain't teaching these young people nothing. Besides, the cops are more in the black community than in the white community. The cops sit out and they look, and they watch, and they observe, and they pay attention, and they monitor. Who, where, when, where, and how? That's how I learned the law enforcement. I probably do your job better than you can, but I may not have the ability to get behind the desk like you and make this city come together, but I can. It's time for some younger faces to come into this community. But you not gonna set no example if you keep leading these kids astray. There has to be something else for these young people, something else to catch their attention, besides gun violence and drugs in the streets, fighting one another. That's ridiculous, it gets sickening to me, because I get tired of these children. Nine times out of ten, phones are available now in every situation. All they gotta do is press a record button, and now they got something to talk about our city. Now our city, all over the dang, on national TV. That is not what Mendon all about. Before you got here, Mr. Terry Gardner, when, I don't know who was there before you, but before then, you didn't hear about gun violence in this city. You didn't hear about pow, 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 and all that, because you want to know why? Because our sheriff department and our police department was on that thing like hot water. But the recreation way out there on the industrial center, what was the purpose of you going to your park? What was the purpose for that? You thought you were gonna have a big outcome, if everybody was gonna show up? I think not. They don't trust you. You got to make us trust you. You got to make us trust you, Mr. Terry. You council people have to make us city, us people that's in this city, trust you. But if y'all don't get along, how can we trust any of you? Our opinion matters. Our opinion matters, just like y'all opinion matter. But we all got to be on one accord. If y'all want to go behind closed doors, all y'all need to go behind closed doors. Y'all standing out two or three people. When y'all vote on something, vote on it together, so we, citizens won't be out here in the blue. We standing in the blue. Now, I thank God that everybody is here, and nobody's choking, and ain't nobody neck to neck. I been wanting to get on Mendon Police Department way before when your husband was living. I called hell on wheels, I couldn't get on it. Now I'd have been trained, now I work for the federal government, oh, can I get on? Can I put in my application? It's called application. It's not gonna cost us any shame if none of y'all don't come together. It's gonna call us to do this, cover our faces. We want to go, when we go to bed at night, we want to know if our city gonna protect it, am I right, Mr. Crawford? Right, Mr. Mayor? This city, we want to know, we sleep at night, we want to hear pow, pow, woo, bullet. This not what this city's about. You better read First Peter 4 and 8, Matthew 18 and 20. Put that in your mindset, it's in your Bible if you ain't tore it out. Sixty-six chapters in the Bible from Genesis Revelation, read it if you ain't got nothing else to do. Where was you at when we cut our ribbon to our church down in the House of Peace, 6A Lee Street? We didn't see you there, Mr. Mayor. I pull up the church's website, House of Peace Ministries, not even much on that piece of paper. Matter of fact, not even much online. Where were you when we cut our ribbon to our church? We see you in everything around here, cutting ribbon, new businesses, bringing more money into our city. Where are you? What car have you sent to the bereavement and family? What nursing homes have you visited? We have lost so many people to COVID. Now all these new viruses coming out. We want to protect our children, that's what we have to do. I want my children protected. When my kids go to sleep at night, I want to feel like they protected. I want to feel like my kids protected, just like any other cities in Mendon, Louisiana. Matter of fact, what's the population here?
Twelve-four.
You see that number? You say twelve-four?
About twelve-four.
It's gonna decrease worse than that, if y'all, y'all don't bring y'all behinds together. It's gonna decrease, not increase, but decrease. You see people moving to home, Bolger, Texas, half of Mendon is in Texas. Look at what y'all doing to us. This is a bad, bad influence. If y'all don't come together like y'all supposed to, y'all gonna run these citizens out of here. This town gonna be on zero balance. That's a negative to my attention. Zero balance. A lot of y'all been on this board for years. It's time for y'all, if y'all don't come together, move out the way so somebody else can get here. It's a lot more people that love to be sitting right behind that doggone desk where y'all at, but if y'all don't come together, you gonna run these citizens out of here. We need to come together, for my sake, for your sake, and for this city, for the people here in Mendon, Louisiana, and also for the children. Y'all, we gonna have to encourage our children, because if we don't, the streets ready, am I right, chief? Am I right, Mr. Terry? Am I right, council? The street is ready. We don't want the street teaching our kids nothing. It starts at home first. That go for all of us in here, including me. It starts at home first. I don't want no street chastising my children, I could tear their ass off myself. I'm not giving my kids up to no streets. The Bible say, train up a child in the way he should go, and when he grow old, he shall not depart from it. Read it in your Bible if you ain't got nothing else to do. But Ephesians, chapter six, verse one, two, and three, everybody should quote that. Kids, obey your parents, honor thy father and thy mother, which is the first commandment we're promised, that their days might be long upon this earth. My dad is a friend of home director, shows a mortician, he can preach it, teach it, sing it, and bury you at the same time. The graveyard is still open for all of us, twenty-four, seven, jail, hospital, graveyard. We all done laid our loved ones to rest. But if this city don't come together, it's gonna be deceased, zero balance. My words to you, come together. We got to, for the sake of this city. If y'all can't get on one accord and start agreeing with something, these people gonna start leaving here. This is my town. I represent Mendon when I go somewhere. When I say Mendon, when I say in my end, that's stand for Mendon, Louisiana. We didn't hear about gun violence and all this chaos and this animosity and this bickering with y'all now. I'm glad that y'all sitting here and everybody just calm, because it's time for y'all to listen to the citizens of Mendon. It's time for y'all to listen to what we have to say. Now, nobody's getting upset, no anger, no cuss word, no fight, no bickering, no fist talking, and you ain't got to have nobody standing with their guns ready to be pulled. If we don't come together now, this town gonna be zero balance. There's not gonna be nobody here anymore. I'm an inspirational speaker, and if I have to set the bar, I'm gonna set the bar. But it has to be something else for our young people to do here. It just don't have to be at that recreation center way out there on the service road. It don't have to be way out there. Y'all start coming together, coming with some type of group activity for these young people, because if not, they gonna keep pushing to violence. They gonna keep going to the drugs in the streets. They gonna keep doing the things and knowing they breaking the law. What else can you give these children here? Besides watching y'all on national TV act of food? It's foolishness, what God says it is, foolishness. All y'all believe in something, and I hope you believe in the Lord, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, because you not waking up on your own. But I challenge every last one of you in here today, you hear me well on with them mics, but you can hear me with your ears. I challenge you today, put your differences aside, and let's walk together like a community is supposed to. Because if you don't, you gonna have zero balance here in this city, and ain't nobody gonna want to come here and live. Thank you.
You give us your name and your address, please, sir?
My name is Jeremy Adams. I stay at 109 Millard Fuller Drive. Mr. Mayor, honor and discipline is what I expect from an executive. Compassion, transparency, honor and discipline is what I expect from our police officers when they deal with the public. It is unethical to see an officer come before this council and behave the way he did. It is unethical to see an officer come before this council and behave the way he did at the last council meeting. You lack honor. You said nothing. You said nothing. As Officer Smith was disrespectful to two council members. You said nothing. Officer Smith started off with Ms. Walker. He said he had a question for her. But he was here in his uniform and refused to answer her questions. When she tried to continue, he said, "Let's move on." At that point in time, I expected you to say something to this officer. You didn't. You either lacked the intestinal fortitude to say anything to him or you were okay with his insolence. Next, I watched as Officer Smith attempted to insult my council member. When he started, he said he had one question for each council member. He asked my council member, "Why can't we pass the budget?" My council member answered his question, and he proceeded to ask another question. That would be a second question. When met with resistance from my council member, he proceeded to insult him. At this point in time, again, I am waiting on you to step in and address this officer's behavior. You did not. When Mr. Smith finished speaking, you took that opportunity to talk. I thought at that point you were gonna read this officer the riot act. But instead, you just wanted to let us know that you got your bulletproof vest for your ride along. After the city council meeting, after the city council meeting, we again saw a severe lack of honor and discipline from you and our officers. I watched as you attempted to assault my council member with a chair. The first video that I saw, you asked the cameraman if he saw Mr. Bradford hit you with a chair. You said he freaking tried to push you over with the chair. I watched the video. I didn't see that. Now, a couple of days later, you came back with an apology or an explanation. It really didn't seem like either. You said you did it in jest. One of those statements is a lie. We don't know which one it is, but one of them is a lie. You are lying to the people. The last time that I spoke with you in these chambers, I said I felt like you don't understand how representative government works. And I find myself here again telling you the same thing. It is your job to bring this council together. I don't care about your excuses. It is your job to make sure that nobody comes in here and disrespects these council members, especially not a city employee. You failed in your duty that night. Do you understand that you failed in your duty? I don't know. Ms. Walker, thank you for catching our flag. You knocked over our flag and didn't even attempt to reach out and grab it. As I watched this officer come back into the frame of this video, did he come in and attempt to de-escalate the situation? He did not. He came back in, again, to further disrespect a council member. At this point in time, I saw the chief step in and do the right thing. He pulled the officer back. As an officer, he should have come in. You don't come in and escalate the situation by yelling. You need to de-escalate the situation, find out information. Instead, this officer came to your defense when you were in the wrong. Anybody who's seen the video knows that you were in the wrong. This officer came to your defense because he has been pulled into the argument about the budget. And he feels like you're the one that's out here fighting for it. You're the only person standing in the way of this budget. This officer came to your defense when the community has been out here trying to get him his raise. He came in and disrespected two council members, and you did nothing. You have no honor. I hope you do not seek a second term. If you do, Mr. Bradford, I sit on my porch and I told you I was gonna give you a run, didn't I? I told you that on my porch. If I feel like you're not doing your job, I'm gonna make you work for your seat. Just a question. How is it that this officer is able to come before this council and behave the way he did and not get a word from you? I voted for you, Mr. Mayor. I am one of your employers in this community. You answer to the people. I am one of them. Will you answer my question?
Repeat your question.
How is it that a police officer can come before this council in uniform and speak to counselors the way he did?
How can he do that? He, that officer reports to the elected chief of police.
Are you not the chief executive?
I, I am the chief executive officer.
Hang on, hang on, let's not talk about that. Are you not the chief executive? Are you not responsible for this council up here?
What I would like for you to do?
What I would like for you to do is answer my question. You are my employee. You're going to answer my question. Don't tell me what I need to do. You tell, you tell me what I want to know.
What I have learned during the last two and a half years, there's been a lot of disrespect on this council.
Okay, so you're not answering my question?
I'm, I'm going to.
No, you're not going to. I don't want the roundabout answer. I want my answer.
No, I didn't do anything. And the reason I didn't do anything is the same reason I don't do anything when other council members disrespect.
Sir. You have no honor. Honor is doing the right thing, even when nobody's listening. We watched as you did nothing. No honor, no discipline. You have failed.
No, no.
Yes, ma'am, if you'll come up and give us your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Ashley. My address is seven zero-three Carolina Street, Mendon, Louisiana. Um, just a little background on myself. I was actually born in Shreveport, but I left Mendon when I was six, but I returned in nineteen seventy-five, um, to get married, and I lived here then. And I left in nineteen seventy-eight. But three years ago, I decided, after getting laid off of my job for forty-two years in California, I decided that I thought I could live much better in Mendon than I could in California on my retirement. So I moved to Mendon. When I first got here, no one in my neighborhood could even tell me where I could go to register to vote. After being here three years, I still do not know who my representative is. I don't even know what district I live in. No one has ever been to my house. I have voted. I did vote for you. Um, I did, but my, what I'm here for tonight is to talk about the five-dollar increase on the utility bills. And me myself, I already pay an extra, um, I believe it's ten dollars every month because I don't get paid until the third Wednesday of the month. So I have to pay an additional fee every month as it is. I live with me and my cat. And since I have been here, only once have I paid a bill under two hundred dollars. I cannot afford another five dollars. I believe, I lived in a state where PG&E would even work with you if you were not able to pay your bill. You were able to make arrangements to pay your bill. You were able, they worked with you. Here, you can't even make an arrangement if you don't have the money to pay. There's not even programs in Mendon to help you assist paying your bill as we have there. I know California is a large state, nothing compared to here, but I lived in a small city just like Mendon called Vallejo, California. And we still had those things. I've never in my life struggled to live with California money in a small town. My friends were like, "You're gonna live great. You're gonna live large. You're gonna have extra money because you're moving back to Mendon." Not so. I've never struggled in my life since I moved back here mainly because of my utility bill. I had a conversation with an elderly woman during the, after the ice storm. She's eighty years old. She gets seven hundred dollars a month, and her utility bill was six hundred dollars. And she was not able to extend it, so she had to get a loan from a loan company that you see on TV, Cash USA, whatever it is. And then after she got the loan to help pay her utility bill, she ended up being, the loan, if you don't pay it back immediately, it's doubled. So she still ended up being not able to pay her utility bill and not ever able to pay the loan. I understand that the police need a raise. I understand that. But I do believe there has to be another way that you can find something in your budget for them. I was able, I watched the last budget meeting that you had, and I was totally disgraced. I was shocked because this is a community. It seems to be a diverse community, and we should be able to work together. If we can't do it because we love God, we should be able to do it because we love one another. You cannot just come in here. It's not about the mayor. It's not about each one of the council members. It's about the city of Mendon. It's about what is best for Mendon. I understand that the police, I'm, I was shocked to learn how much they make an hour. I can't blame them for not wanting to work because they put their life in danger every day in this city. I also heard them say something, I'm not sure what he was saying, about the potholes in Mendon. And, um, I don't know if they said, "You're not supposed to fix anymore, or you can't, there, there's not money for it." But riding through my neighborhood, there are lots of potholes that need to be fixed. When someone took me on a tour of another neighborhood in Mendon a couple of weeks ago, there are no potholes. There are no, um, hole, there are no dents that keep going in the street. You could actually race your car up and down the street without having to worry about your tires busting on you. So I believe that, like I'm saying, I'm here because there is no way that I can afford another five dollars. And I know the people in your districts cannot afford another five dollars. So somehow you guys are gonna have to come together and work out a solution for this because there is no way that you can put the strain on the community. I don't know how many people live in Mendon. And I'm glad I made the decision to move back to Mendon. I love Mendon. It's a small town. It's a diverse town. It's changed since I was here in nineteen seventy-five. The, um, you can see interracial couples that I didn't see when I lived in here in nineteen seventy-five. Mendon has changed, but evidently this council has not. And you guys need to come together, pray about it. That prayer that you did opening, you gotta be sincere about it. And you need to be sincere and ask God to show you the way to make everything in that budget work. Thank you.
If you'll call me tomorrow, if you'll call me tomorrow and give me your address, and I'll look on the map and see who, who your council person is.
I appreciate that.
I'm your council person. Excuse me? I'm your council person, District fifty.
What's your name?
Tariqa Walker.
Pleased to meet you.
I met you at House of Peace.
You did? You told me, you said, I remember that now that you mentioned it, but you also said, when I asked you, where did I go to register to vote? You told me at that time, it was too late. And you also told me, I started to come to your house, but I changed my mind because I said I know the people that live there are registered to vote. And I had, you might not remember the conversation, but I remember it very well. I see your face. And I, and you said I should have stopped when I was going through the neighborhood. And that way, you would have been able to tell me where to go to register to vote and where, um, because I wasn't able to vote. And I actually ended up voting, registering online because I could, no one could tell me where to go.
I, I don't remember the conversation going like that. I do remember mentioning that you could use the voter reg, voter registration card or you could register online.
And that's what I ended up having to do. But even you couldn't tell me where to go to register.
I don't remember it going that way, but we agreed.
That's too bad. But you know, that's neither here nor, nor there because I am registered and I did have the opportunity to vote. But that still does not stand, it still stands, I don't know you.
You may not.
If I passed you on the street, I wouldn't know you were my council representative. I don't know you. Thank you. Good night.
Yes, sir, if you'll give us your name and your address, please, sir?
Randolph Walker, seven eleven Peach Street here in Mendon, Louisiana. I know everybody's been grilled pretty good tonight, so I, I'm gonna spare that. I had a couple of notes that I've made, and I, I guess you've noticed I've been coming to the council meetings and to the workshops. And I've noticed several things that I, I really don't totally agree with. I just got back into the country now for about two or three years that I moved back home. And, uh, it's very reckless, the way that you run this city. And I think that you, you are dividing the city even further now. And, and the disagreements that you have are basically distractions. I have to agree with the money man. If the money ain't there, then you, you have nothing anyway. Okay? And all of this, this, this dictatorship that, that everybody has, this authoritarian government. I, last time I checked, America was a democracy, wasn't it? Okay, well, uh, why don't we just kind of get back to, uh, being that type of people? Okay, well, why don't we just kinda get back to being that type of people? And try to make some things work, and make all of this work. Job descriptions. When you make the handbook, you need to put job descriptions in there, because I think some of us are lacking in that area. We don't understand what our premises are, and where our faults lie, because we don't understand. I think the attorney, you are an attorney, you know what the law states, and you know how you're supposed to act in the court. But I, is it a definition for a council person?
Yes sir, there are duties outlined in the city charter.
Where are they listed?
You can come to the city and view the city charter, or if you Google ordinances of.
Already tried that. You got better ordinances for the requirements for someone who works on the street team better than someone that's qualified to be a police officer. How much sense does that make? If you look at the qualification between the two, my police officers are lacking, what you need, a GED? How much sense does that make? I'm talking about, you know, I understand it's hard to find policemen, but is it really that hard? To not find somebody who's qualified to do the job? Because being a police officer entitles more than just arresting folks now. You gotta be a social worker, you gotta be a peacekeeper, you gotta do a lot of things. And if you're not equipped to actually handle that job, you really, you know, you don't need that job. I understand that everybody has these little teams that they're in, I watch our pair off. You and you. He validates your mistakes, and you validate his. You validate her mistakes, and she validates yours. The only person, sometimes I see that's trying to get something done, is this man here. Why is that? But he's steady getting cut down because of what? Because he's trying to get something done? Now that's wrong. Instead of us cutting down what's wrong in our community, we tend to cut down what's right. Where does that come from? That's an evil plus. You know, right is no longer right, can't be trusted. If you're right, you're right. And then, I'm not one to bring God into the picture of everything, but just because I bring God in, that doesn't legitify me. That gives me no more authority than anyone else. I have a personal relationship with them, I'm hoping that you all do too. So, you know, that needs to stop. The workshops, you don't do anything. I've been to the workshops. Only thing that you do is justify something that you don't do. You say you did this, and you say you did that. And from workshop to workshop, from agenda to agenda, it's just passing along. Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Bradford, what's going on with you two? What is, I'm telling you, is this a domestic squabble?
You got me. You got me.
That's what it appears to be. But you know, me and my wife have problems too, but I don't go out in the street broadcasting them. I don't think nobody wants to hear that, you know? Handle your things, handle your business. The city is looking for you to do great things. Everybody wants you to do good things. The budget has to be passed, we all know that. Just like the people in DC know that, the budget has to be passed. Everybody might be holding out on this, and this, and that. We can't all get what we want, but we know that the budget has to be passed. So let's get over that. Let's move on to something that's really concrete that we can work with. Like, police officers need things. Get with him, he said, "Come to him, and then you can figure it out." Everybody goes back to step. What step gonna provide? You made a suggestion, twelve ain't gonna get it. I know it's a good offer, but twelve ain't gonna get it when you're half a million short. So you gotta figure out something else. And I think you, between the people who are representing, I think you can do that. But you got to sit down and quit bickering about things and start to communicate with one another. And come up with some solutions. Add it, add it all up. Use the people that you have here, and the talent that you have here, and the talent around you to be more productive. Not to be at war with each other, and just in competition for the next election. And if you're gonna use the meat of your mayor, use it fairly. Don't block the whole newspaper with things that you're trying to justify. What about the other sides? I know you have an opinion too, you have an opinion, you have an opinion. Why don't all of the opinions get into the newspaper? Those are some things that y'all can do to subjugate some of this bickering, and the issues of negativity that you bring into this community, because it starts here. And you need to stop it. I'm new here, but I was born here, back when the doctor had to come to my house, back in 1956, because I wasn't allowed to go to Minden Medical Center. And I thought we were past that. Was I wishing, or did I wake up somewhere in the middle of a nightmare? To find out that all things are still the same? Did Dr. King do what he did for no reason at all? Well, right now in this country, we wanna kill voter rights, and nobody has any rights anymore? And if you can't solve the problems here on this level, how you think DC gonna solve the problems? Do we wanna go back to where we were at, or do we need to move forward? And you two stop with this domestic thing, go kiss and make up, please.
It's not gonna happen.
Well, do something.
I promise you that.
Do something though, you know? And then if, Ms. Bloxton, take his seat, and let him take your seat. Because that's what the teachers used to do when we had two rowdy folks in the same classroom. They just basically would separate us, so we can get some things done. Maybe y'all need to separate them too, so y'all can get some things done. Straight up, straight talk. All of you are trying to do a job, and I know it's difficult as much as it is, but get with the man. He's got the money, he know the purse strings, backwards and forward. While y'all talking about giving out raises to somebody? I say, give him permanent job and a raise. But I wanna thank y'all. I'm gonna continue to come to the council meetings, I'll continue to come to the workshops. And if you ever need me for anything, just let me know. Hopefully, I wish peace all to you all, and many blessings.
Thank you.
I think things are gonna work out.
Yes sir, I would like to make one comment. When you ask about what our responsibilities are, as far as our employees in our city, each, whether it be an officer, or whatever they may do, there are job descriptions. When we're elected, the Louisiana Municipal Association has conferences and meetings that we're supposed to go to.
What I'm trying to understand is, does everybody understand what their job is?
Yes sir, and we have a.
Sometimes y'all seem to get it twisted.
We have a book, an ethics book, that's about this thick, and it pretty much answers every question, what my responsibilities are, and what the council's responsibilities are, and what we need to do to run the city efficiently and correctly.
Take one of the workshops and just revisit that.
Yes sir, they have actually come up here and given that workshop in the civic center.
Maybe a couple of more times wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everybody? Okay, we're gonna go to council comments, and we're gonna start with Mr. Wayne Edwards in District A.
I really don't have a comment, I just wanna make a statement. I wanna thank the citizens that spoke up tonight, and I also wanna thank Michael Ruffa, what he said.
Okay, Ms. Walker, District B. Okay. Mr. Bradford, District C.
I just wanna let everyone know that this is, if I'm not mistaken, branch councilor money. I'm not sure if you're gonna recognize that.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Roy.
I would like to congratulate Taka on her Woman of the Year Award. She is definitely an asset to our city, and we thank her for everything she does for us, and especially those kids that she deals with every day. Also, I'd like to congratulate Jake Chapman on the Man of the Year Award. I've known Jake a long time, real good guy, and I'd like to thank him for all that he's done. One other point I'd like to make is, National Night Out is going to be on October the 12th, from 6 to 8. So let's not forget about that. If you have any questions about that, just feel free to give myself or Ms. Wanda a shout, and we'd be glad to help in any way we can. One other thing that I wanna point out is, I've got some problems on Lewisville Road with a school light. We've been working on it, trying to get it fixed. So everybody that goes up and down Lewisville Road, please be mindful, we've got kids that are going to school. Definitely do not want someone to be ran over. And lastly, I would like to thank everyone that came out and spoke. I appreciate your comments, your thoughts, and your concerns. And if I can help anybody in any way that spoke, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Ms. Bloxton, I was sitting here gathering my thoughts. Ms. Bloxton.
So what I would like to do is to give you a heads up of what's going on in Minden this week. Tomorrow, Tuesday, at 5 o'clock is the Fair Parade downtown. And then, that's the Webster Parish Fair that's this week, out at the fairgrounds. Thursday morning at 9 o'clock to 1:30 is Senior Citizen Day at the fair. And this year, instead of going out to the fairgrounds, the senior citizens are going to have their bingo here at the civic center in the big room. So that begins at 9 o'clock, and all senior citizens are welcome to come play bingo. Friday, 3:30 is Homecoming Parade downtown. And that's for all the alum and home football game that night. So there's a lot going on, and what, basically, I would like to invite everybody to participate in the events that you would like to. But on the other hand, please be aware that there's gonna be more people moving out and about this week because of all the activities. This weekend, we're going to have out-of-town guests coming in for homecoming. So just be aware that the streets are gonna be more crowded, excuse me, Walmart's gonna be more crowded, the restaurants are gonna be more crowded. So just take that into consideration when you're making your plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloxton. Mr. Yocum.
Thank you to each person who came out and let your voice be heard. Appreciate everything everyone had to say. Echo what Ms. Bloxton said. Get out and enjoy the fair this week, hopefully it'll be nice. It's always a great, great community time, we have our parades and our fair, and so just get out and enjoy that. Tagging on what several people said, I'm gonna take off the city attorney hat, put on the preacher hat. I'm also a preacher. We have to learn to set aside our prejudices. And I'm not talking about racism, I'm talking about just prejudice in general, whether it's personal, whether it's validated, justified, or not. We have to learn to come together as a community. And that's not just for our councils or our mayor, but ones as citizens. We have to learn to go back to the roots of who we are. The golden rule is so powerful, if you just practice it, doing to others, if you have them doing to you, just reverse rule. The angel, when he echoed Jesus' coming, he said, "Peace on earth and goodwill towards men." And that's what we need, we need peace and goodwill. So I hope tonight, whether you're a prayerful person or not, or there's been a long time or not, just take a moment and have a second with God and repent. And you say, "God, I'm sorry for anything that I might have done, or thought, or preconceived ideas or notions, and work on my heart." Because whether you're right or wrong, everyone's got a little work that can be done on the inside. And so I hope that we can do that as individuals, and I think it'll make us a lot better corporately. I love this town, I moved home on purpose to this town, because it's just in my DNA. And I pray God's blessing upon this council, from Districts A through E, every elected official, that he would do whatever he has to do for us to come together and back home and grow.
Appreciate it, Jimbo. Well, we had quite the roast tonight, didn't we? I would like to congratulate our HR manager, April Aguilar. She had been conducted into the who's who among professional leaders in the human resource field for 2021. And I'd like to congratulate you for that and your hard work, and for your dedication and loyalty that you give our city. Also, I would like to congratulate the Makers Fair, that was this past weekend before last, that Culture Crossroads. It was very well attended by everybody in the community, and there was a lot of booths set up, and it was very well attended. And I enjoyed it. Ms. Bloxton touched on the fair parade. Also, the fair's gonna be October the 5th through the 9th. The fair parades at 5:00 PM, I don't know if you said the time or not, but 5:00 PM. The Homecoming Parade, for all the men in high school graduates of years that are coming back to town, will be October the 8th, which is Friday, and that'll be at 3:30 PM. Mr. Roy touched on National Night Out. We have a trunk or treat with the Men in Rec Complex, and it's also co-sponsored by the Men and Police Association. And that is October the 30th, from 9, I mean, I'm sorry, from 5 to 9:00 PM. Halloween in Minden this year, I visited with the mayor in Sibley, and we're gonna have Halloween on October the 30th, instead of the 31st, which is a Sunday. So mark your calendars for that. On October the 15th and 16th, we have Highway 80. It's where everybody sets up and down Highway 80, it starts in Texas and it runs all through Highway 80. Bab's Park, we have a pop-up market there, which is Excel for Excellence. And that, I do not have the date, but it's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I'm guessing it's gonna be on our website. Okay. I guess everybody expects me to give a big speech about what was said tonight. Not gonna do that. What I would like to tell everybody is, when I ran for office, I said that I'm gonna keep the office transparent. I said, "I'm gonna do the best of my ability to represent everybody across the whole city." Not a part of the city, but the whole city. And that's what you see me do. I'm in all parts of the city, whether it be at a ribbon-cutting, or whether it's help organizing the re-grand opening of Yule Park, or donating things to Yule Park, or whatever the case may be. We had a huge turnout at Yule Park, and I think everyone that was there enjoyed it. I was there myself, cooking hamburgers, and Ms. Bloxton turned out for that. And we had a good turnout. The bingo, we had to add tables for bingo, so that was very well attended. I am very transparent, my door is open constantly. It's up to the council whether or not they want to return my phone calls. Some do, some don't. It's up to the council to respond to my emails, some do, some don't. But I would encourage the council, if you have something on the budget, just like on the last email, if you have something on the budget, or something that you wanna work out on the budget, come to my office and let's see what it is. We need to know what it is. But you're gonna have. We need to know what it is, but you're gonna have to come to my office to do that. I go to, anytime there's something going on in our city, I make every attempt to be there. If it's a community meeting, when I'm allowed, I go to community meetings. When I'm not allowed, I go back home. But the thing about it is, we've all got to work together. My office is always open. And we really do need to pass this budget. Tomorrow, like I told Mr. Flure the other day, tomorrow we'll be sending out an email, where, and today, you know, we didn't approve some things because it wasn't absolutely necessary. But the thing about it is, I'm not one person's mayor, I'm not the white person's mayor, and I'm not the black person's mayor. I'm everybody's mayor in this, in the city of Mendon, and I work hard every day, and I follow all the rules, and I follow all the regulations, and before I do something, if it's, if, if, I think if it's questionable, I ask Mr. Yocum, or I ask the Attorney General, or I ask the Louisiana Municipal Association, or I look back and see what previous mayors have done, and look at their documentations, what they signed and what they did. So if you ever have any questions about how I'm doing things, or why I'm doing things, or if you think I'm getting out of my lane, City Hall number's 377-2144, I return every phone call, every phone call. So I would appreciate it if y'all would come see me. Council, come see me. We need to work this out, we need to approve the budget. And I want everybody to have a great fall, the weather is beautiful out there, the leaves are starting to turn, so enjoy the fall and enjoy your family, and, and get out and enjoy our parks and our waterways, and all of the things that we-